Select Board's meeting. Will everybody stand for a Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment of silence to reflect about what happened in Orlando. Okay, I guess we better begin. First, we'll start with the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you. So we start off just going over a couple of updates, keep you apprised of things we discussed at the last meeting. So the first thing is the Safe Foods to School. Just to remind folks, next meeting will be on Tuesday, June 21st, for the Select Board at 6:00 PM. And one of the major things on the agenda is actually to vote on the order of taking for the properties that are related to the Safe Foods to School project along Route 10. We are finalizing the documentation up with Town Council and also waiting to provide an opportunity to the two property owners to express any concerns they may have had to the offers for their pieces. This again is the order of taking for all of the properties, both those that were submitted by certificate of donation, also those that were being compensated for. Second, any questions on Safe Foods to School? Okay. Second thing is on procurement, just a couple of updates. HVAC with the library piece, we are in progress with that. I just received correspondence from the gentleman who had done some of the work over the library to look at the project. I have a lot of concerns once he submitted the documents to me, and I think it's going to hold the process up. According to the estimate for what they submitted, what we need to do in order to have someone come in, remove and reinstall and set up the new system, they're looking closer to $69,000. We did not budget $69,000 for this project out of capital. If you remember last year, not this past May, but May 2015, when it went to annual town meeting, after we received quotes, we believe that based on those numbers, it was $35,000. But after we've actually had someone come in, they hired a consultant to look at the project more thoroughly, all the specifications are what they needed. The estimated cost of the project is about $69,000. It raises up the threshold under Chapter 149 for procurement laws, it makes things a lot more complicated. Plus, we currently do not have the funds to do the project to that extent.
Does the Board wish to have this flagged in case we have free cash available?
Well, I think, just my understanding when we've done capital projects, my understanding is we tried to keep them out of the capital budget because they qualify in that section. So we try to avoid using free cash for that purpose. And free cash does ultimately get divided up, so it goes over to capital.
I understand, and I'm just looking at the extenuating circumstances relative to this and the special projects, that sometimes we flag in our free cash. I'm just asking a question of the Board. We certainly need to have the work done eventually. All I'm saying, you want to flag it?
Well, I'm sure I'll raise it something ahead when I need to.
Define what you mean by flagging. It just makes you note that we want to discuss it or flag it for actual expenditures when the money comes up?
I want to take and put it on, like at the bottom of our agenda sheet, so it sits there so that it makes us aware of the fact that that's a pending issue.
I don't have an issue doing that.
I'd like to look at the numbers a little closer to see what the $69,000 includes. I think, you know, can't we look at that before we?
Well, I hope we do.
Well, absolutely, but I'm just saying that where did you? I like to look at the numbers first before we...
I didn't come up with the numbers, the numbers are handed to me by the consultant who did an assessment of the project. When we have the number which we are based on, the estimated number is what we have to utilize when we do bidding. So it changes the whole procedure based on the threshold.
Yeah.
Okay. Kona Park Pavilion Roof, I did speak with Mark Reed from Parks Commission earlier this week. We discussed his looking into the different dimensions that we need for the park roof, in addition to what materials they want to use, if there's any additional work that needs to be done under them. And they are looking to do this project for the fall, period of time after which the pavilion is usually rented, so that's not during key use season. That being the case, we'll be looking at this closer as we get to the end of summer, early fall, to go to bid for that piece. The concern is that if the cost does become higher than what we've actually had appropriated from CPC, that they may wish to do it as a two-part project. But we'll have all the information we need in order to go to bid, because we do not necessarily want two different contractors doing the work. So, excuse me. Questions on that? All right, RFP for legal, we still need to do that. We've been dealing with some ongoing issues, so I haven't wanted to tip our legal counsel off and upset them at the current moment until we've resolved some of the things on the table. HVAC system maintenance for Town Hall, so this is some we've talked about before. We currently have a contract with SNE, it's been a three-year contract. We're at the end of the three-year contract with them now. They are in charge of maintaining our HVAC system. Their costs are going up next year, I think about $2,000 or $3,000 from what they originally started three years ago. Each year, they gave, when they gave us a three-year piece, it seemed to go up each time. We are looking, we're very interested in utilizing B&amp;G Mechanical and giving them a go. We were originally going to do an RFP for this and go out for another three-year contract, and then we realized we're at the end of June, and it's really going to be push comes to shove. We're in the process of attempting to contact B&amp;G and seeing if we can do a one-year contract with them, see how it goes, and then at that point, in the middle of this year, go out to bid for a three-year contract, so that we're in compliance. Any questions on that? Excellent. Community compact cabinet grants, just some updates. Fire Department study for the organizational and operational piece has been completed, as I mentioned last time. We are still finishing up the paperwork on that. The HR study for the wage and classification and organizational chart with Don Jacobs is still in progress. At this point, we're going through draft numbers and draft job descriptions. We're hoping to try to pull things back together by mid-July and have an opportunity for Don to sit down with Personnel Policy Procedure Board and review what they have so far, how the jobs are classified, all the numbers that came in, also the descriptions. The last one was the governmental structure and draft charter. We are working with Bernie Lynch on this piece, and we are hoping to pick back more up in mid-August. He is waiting and dependent on the organizational chart that Don drafts to be able to move forward a couple more steps with his piece. I think at this point, he's met with everyone. If you're a Board member who has not called him back, please do so. At some point, he will stop calling and emailing folks. So please do reach out, he's doing a great job at trying to contact everyone in the entire town and reach out to them. Any questions on those? Okay. Meeting reports, I had a stand meeting last week, it was our annual over in Sturbridge, Sturbridge Village, Old Sturbridge Village? One of the things they had talked about, which was rather interesting, was economic development and things that certain towns were looking out for and kind of concerned about. We don't have taxi services here, so it's not a competing business, but in the western, further western part of the state, people are concerned with Uber coming in and not being licensed and taking over the licensed practice of your general taxis. At the same time, they're having the same problem with other competing online places that are like, not house swaps, but there are places to rent out rooms as if it's a B&amp;B without having to get all the licenses and everything like that. Other communities are starting to get really concerned about this, and their Board of Health have started to look into these.
Air B&amp;Bs.
Air B&amp;Bs, thank you, Charlie. The gentleman who is the health agent from Franklin County...
Laniers.
Yes.
Is this a game report?
No, 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 this is, you're filling in the blanks for me, it works out wonderful. But he would be the person if the Board was interested in more on this. He's done a lot of work on this for various Boards of Health, and has started looking into how to get documentation, how to follow up on these. It's not so much of a concern that I can see directly for us at the moment, because we don't have any current B&amp;Bs in the town that are being competed with by Air B&amp;Bs. But that's not to say that we have folks...
You all know that Air B&amp;Bs are out there competing.
Well, yes, but they're not competing with an actual Bed and Breathics we have in town, so it's not currently physically, you know, harming one of our business folks. But, you know, at the same time, there is a potential that there's businesses being operated without proper licensing, is essentially what the Air B&amp;Bs are. You know, they may not have serve safes when they're serving food, they may not have the annual inspections they need, they may not have certificate of occupancy, they may not be ADA compliant, all those other things. So we are trying to, or at least other communities are trying to catch up with the online growth. But that's just the interesting piece there. This morning, I was out in North Adams, we had a meeting with the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission. They came out to talk to us about their e-licensing software that is going to be going live partially to do bulk renewal licensing in December, or November, December, and then should be going live in 2017. So what will happen come next year, new licensees, if someone comes in to apply for an alcohol license, or someone wants to change manager, change their DBA, transfer the license, whatever it may be, they would actually go online, fill out the entire application, we would get an alert, we would pull it up, we would then proceed with having a hearing like we normally would, we would then go back online, say yea or nay, have been some additional pieces of information, send it on to the ABCC, and they would send us an approval or disapproval back the same way. So it is streamlining that process. The only thing that will become a decision for the Board, and this will be after November, as I explained it today, which would be whether or not the Board wishes to move forward with requiring licensees to renew their license for alcohol online, or to keep at the paper system. The paper system essentially, they would submit something, and then my office would still type it up and then transmit it that way. So they are working on a couple glitches and a couple things I didn't realize, but we made sure we kept them apprised today, so they're now aware, and I think we're moving forward with that. That does not affect one-day liquor licenses, that's simply your retail. So it would affect your Black Birch Vineyard, because they hold a license, it would affect your package stores or your liquor stores, and also affect your restaurants. So, any questions on those? Okay, excellent. Upcoming weeks, just some updates. LPV Leadership Pioneer Valley Leadership Program, I've been engaged in since September, actually comes to a conclusion tomorrow, very excited. They will be giving us all a slideshow presentation, which is about five or so minutes. I will bring that one to upcoming meetings, if you guys are so inclined, just to see what we've been working on for the past year. Tomorrow, we actually do our presentation. The project my group was working on was creating a marketing communication plan for the Franklin County and Northern Quabon Region Opioid Task Force, or the opioid task force of Franklin County and North Quabon Region. And that was our project for the past, probably about four or five months that we had worked on. At this time, we're actually working on getting that distributed as well to the Hampton County Task Force that was recently established. I have sent out emails to all departments of when I'm in and when I'm out the next couple of weeks. I'm trying to use up a bunch of vacation time, I can only carry over five days at the will of the Board, and before then, I'm trying to use up a bunch of days so I don't lose them. I'm still available by phone, email, text message, and I've let all the departments know when I'm in, when I'm out. But I will be out the last week of June and the first week of July, I will be out of state, and partially out of country, but mostly out of state, Charlie. Okay, just some updates on ongoing projects. Cook County Road Project, we are currently still working with Mark Williamsley on this. Police Chief Contract, still in progress. Collective Bargaining Agreement for the Police and Dispatch, we're still trying to wrap up and just make sure our language matches what we've had in the past and that everyone's on the same page. The Highway Collective Bargaining Agreement has been all handled on our side, we're waiting for it to be returned back from the Highway Union with their signatures on it. The Greenway Project, still in progress, still working with arranging meetings with particular officials. The, let's see, Green Communities, I actually had a meeting yesterday. I remember the last meeting, we had talked about meeting, myself meeting with a gentleman from the UMass Extension to work on the green energies, Green Communities Project. He was referred to us by Jim Barry. He is working with one other community now, Ware, and then us. It is a team of himself, who's Dwayne, who was a professor at UMass, also another professor, and I'm sorry, I don't know his last name, Michael, and two students, Lindsay and Kevin. And they actually are working on putting information into our database that we are required to enter things into, I believe it's called the MEI, Mass Energy, and then I can't tell you what the I stands for unfortunately. But they're going to do a lot of the manual data analysis and entry for us, get the information from Eversource, and also HGNB. This is the piece that is often very time-consuming for a lot of municipalities, so it's very helpful for them to be able to step in and give us a hand on this piece. Any questions on that one? Okay. Permanent Guide is still in progress, we're just trying to wrap up formatting. We need to set a date for a finance plan with the Finance Committee to finish that up. We are trying very hard to utilize a document that the Treasurer had created in order to do the raises earlier, to actually compile all the information going forward for FY17 that would summarize each individual when they were originally hired, their data, their current pay in FY16, their change of pay if any for FY17, vacation, sick, all those things. The rate of pay is essentially the request of the auditors, and something they had mentioned that they'd like to be able to track better. We generally do a good job when we have PCFs, but we don't always do a good job when something changes in the middle, like everyone gets a raise. So we just want to make sure that that's well documented. Still working with Code Red and the Dispatchers. Questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Select Board Liaison's reports. Anybody?
I had spoke to Virginia, and nothing now, and also talked to the zoning board, and nothing now either. And I haven't had a meeting with Almers yet.
Master Planning Implementation Committee, we had a meeting, I think it's about two or three weeks ago, and I owe them an updated report, so I'll get them that, but that's the only one. Do have a question on the Safety Complex Committee, though. When are we going to schedule that?
Well, at this point in time, the elected officials and department heads have been put on the list, if memory serves.
Yes.
So the next thing we need to do is open it up to the general public to find out who would like to be on that committee.
I think what we talked about, this goes back a month or so ago, is we put the committee, meet with the committee as it is for the first meeting, and then also invite public in there to get the committee going.
Okay. Do you want to take the lead on that?
Setting up a time?
Yeah.
Sure. I'll work with Heather to set up a time?
Sure.
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else?
I met with the Fire Chief again, been doing it on a weekly basis, although this week he's on vacation. Just trying to put a plan together to address some of those issues coming up on that work, how we're going to deal with the... Standby, so we're still working on that.
Ladies, anything else? Nope. Okay, the Public Safety Group. The Police Chief is up and back.
Evening. So our budget, we're coming to the end of the fiscal year, our expense budget is in good shape. Our wages for Communications are doing well, and I am speaking with Vicki and working with her in regards to wages for the Police Department. As you've known, we've been a bit overspent due to unforeseen circumstances with some officers, and so due to overtime, we've gone over a bit, but we're still talking and trying to work that out. Narcan, I'm waiting for the cert from the state, and then we will be able to carry Narcan in all of our line cars. And the Kiwanis Club graciously has donated money to Southampton, Easthampton, and Westhampton to purchase the Narcan. So I really appreciate that, and that's a great thing for them to do. We have, we had two new auxiliary officers begin training, one has since resigned. We have two more on deck, ready to start training. And for those people out there that don't know, auxiliary officers go through our FTO program, which takes several months to get through, or a few months to several months, depending on the person's availability for the training. And they are, it's a non-paid position. Once they pass the field training program, then it becomes, they become part-time officers, and they are then paid for their time. We have a cruiser that's offline, it lost reverse, so can't quite use that for patrol. It's about a $2,300 repair, however, it is the next car to be replaced. It does have 117,000 miles on it. It will be replaced with a new Ford Explorer that should be delivered sometime in the first week of July. So we are down a car till that time. Fifth grade Norris class graduated the DARE program last Thursday, taught by Officer Scott Gove. He did a great job, and I just wanted to say that Paisanos donated 16 pizzas for their graduation lunch. It was very nice of them. And the officers have been doing an outstanding job, they always do, but just a few things to share with you. On May 23rd, Sergeant Cook responded to an area of Southampton where he reported, where a reported despondent male's vehicle was located by a friend of his, they had been looking for this person. It was reported that the male may have had a firearm with him. Sergeant Cook went into the wooded area, went across a river, found the despondent male, unconscious, hanging from a tree. Sergeant Cook called for the ambulance, lifted the male to lessen the tension on the male's neck, that had a strap around it, and he was doing so for several minutes, holding this male up. Officer David Neal, who was on duty also, was calling Sergeant Cook multiple times on the radio, could not get an answer, so he didn't know what was happening with Sergeant Cook's safety. And the reason he couldn't answer was he was holding this male up, so he could take the tension off the neck. Friend of the victim eventually climbed the tree, cut the strap. Officer Neal responded, entered the woods not knowing the circumstances, put his safety to the side to aid Sergeant Cook. When Officer Neal found Sergeant Cook, he immediately helped evacuate the male through a river and up an embankment to the ambulance. Because of these officer's quick actions, the victim regained consciousness and survived the incident. Also on May 23rd, is a popular date, Officer David Latour deescalated a situation involving an emotionally despondent juvenile that was threatening to jump off of a roof. Officer Latour displayed a compassion and empathy and prevented potential substantial bodily injury of the young teenage girl as he engaged the girl in conversation, and with effective communication skills convinced the girl to voluntarily enter back into the residence. So due to Officer Latour's empathy and communication skills, creating a trust, helped this young teenage girl survive the evening without injury or worse to herself. Yesterday, around 9:00 AM, myself, Lieutenant Illingsworth, and Officer Grober responded to the Brickyard Road area, to a residence for a neighbor that called in a suspicious male around somebody's house, wearing a hoodie, looking in windows. We went in there, went to the residence, walked around the residence, and found a basement door that had pry marks on it. I had an officer at the front, and two of us were at the back of the house investigating the pride door. At one point, Lieutenant Illingsworth at the front of the house heard a door inside, a creaking door, noise in the house, advised us. And at one point, the male suspect that was actually in the house exited a window onto a roof and jumped to the backyard, and he was then placed under arrest without incident. And there was a crash that happened right by Norris School on Palmeretta Road, a couple weeks back or so. It involved a male party that was reported to have kidnapped a female in Easthampton, a witness that tried to intervene, I guess was knocked to the ground. So we had this report of the car, and then an off-duty Easthampton officer located the car, was behind it, followed it. It was heading towards Southampton, towards Palmeretta Road. Easthampton PD was responding out to help stop the car. At that point, the vehicle did enter Southampton, down Palmeretta Road, it was reported to be operating at a high rate of speed. And Lieutenant Illingsworth and I responded to Palmeretta Road. Officer Grober was already farther down Palmeretta Road when the car went flying by him. The car approached the school area, we were going to put, Lieutenant Illingsworth was going to put spike strips out, but the car came quicker than anticipated, and it ended up going into a spin, crashed, taken out the school zone sign, and turned onto its side and hit a telephone pole. This just happened moments after, or minutes after the buses had cleared the area. Luckily, nobody was hurt, you know, in the crash, except for the female victim was transported to the hospital with injuries. The operator was arrested by officers. So that's basically the update, but I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what's been happening with some of our calls.
So much for a quiet town.
Yes, I'm glad to see you're keeping pace with things.
Thanks to you and your, thanks to you and your officers. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good guys.
Oh my God.
Representative of the Fire Department.
Hopefully you can't top that.
Yeah. Keep this... We have exciting calls as well, but just not recently, I guess.
My name is Patrick Eline, I'm captain with the Easthampton, Southampton Fire Department. And so on behalf of Chief Workman, he's asked me to come in front of you tonight and give you a report of what's going on. So to start off, I'd like to start off with equipment status. At this point, right now, A1, our second ambulance, is out of service, it's having some electrical issues. Rich Fasoli, our deputy chief, is now in charge, he's in charge of trying to fix it. He's been in touch with a company out of New Jersey to try to resolve the issues, so they're working on that right now. Whether that's going to be done tomorrow or next week, I'm not sure, but right now we're down to one ambulance. Heather had alluded to earlier, as far as the report, one of the reports, part of the report that had been made and recommendation was, is that we utilize Engine 3 as the primary instead of Engine 4. Now, Engine 3 is now the primary engine out the door for all calls. It has all the equipment on it, more so than Engine 4. The chief's hope is that in the future, he can then get more equipment and put that in Engine 4 to make sure both engines are at equal levels. With Engine 3, all four batteries needed to be replaced on Sunday, it wasn't keeping a charge, so Deputy Chief Fasoli had just taken care of that as well. One of the other issues is the tanker truck, as we know, we have a tanker truck that has 3,000 gallons down at the Pond Station. One of the things that's happening is it's going to be retrofitted with a rear dump valve. What that means is that it's going to be easier and faster for us to get water into our drop tanks, or in the case of mutual aid, to get water into their drop tanks and get water a lot faster. So that's going to be retrofitted. When I asked the deputy chief today, he said he wasn't sure exactly when that was going to happen, but it should be happening by the end of the summer. The, we also got a new portable fan for, a fan for taking out smoke and/or positive pressure ventilation. This fan is, not only can be plugged in, but can also be, it's also battery-operated, which is good for us in situations where we may have high gas levels and we don't want to create a spark, so we don't want to plug anything in. So it's a nice new purchase, and that is in service on Engine 3, and all members have been in service to the utilization of that. The new mounting brackets for computers, we have computers in each of the ambulances, they've basically sort of been free-floating in the back of the cabinet. We just purchased brackets, and they'll be permanent... We just purchased brackets, and they'll be permanently mounted in the ambulance. Not only is that going to be a, a safety issue for us, it's also going to be able, to be able to access the computer a lot quicker without having it on our lap, it'll be in a mounted situation, so that'll be a, a nice, nice added feature for the paramedics in the back of the ambulance. Also, this, this week was a new fire nozzle called a Blitzfire nozzle. It's a, a large nozzle that is similar to a deck gun on top of a, of a fire truck, but in this situation, it's a portable piece of equipment, and can be run by one member at a time, as we all know, we all work short, so you can actually utilize this piece of equipment in a defensive operation. If you had a fire and it was deemed not, in a defensive tactic, then we would utilize this piece of equipment to use, pour lots and large gallons of water at a time on the fire. So it's a really nice addition to the arsenal for firefighting equipment. At this point, our other equipment is in service and in, in good running order. No other issues with, with our equipment at this time. Training. We've been doing a lot of training on Thursday nights, as always. It's been very well attended. Last week, we had 14 members attending the training. We have driver training that's going on right now with some of our new members. So tonight, in fact, Lieutenant LaRochelle is out doing driver training with fire trucks with some of the new members, so that we have more people who can then respond to the fire station and grab a fire truck, which is something that, you know, had been lacking, and, and now we're really trying to tackle that, that potential problem. As far as personnel, what we have on the roll call at this point, we have 37 active members. 10 of those are paramedics, 23 are EMTs, and four are first responders. All are either fire-trained or becoming fire-trained. We have a training that's going on called Hampshire 6, which is run by the county, and that is helping train our new members so that they are able to do offensive firefighter operations, not only just being on the fire ground, helping out with equipment, but they'll actually be involved in doing firefighting. So that's a really progressive action that we have going on. As far as the schedule, I'm in charge of the schedule, and the schedule has been 100% filled during the days. There has been no lack of coverage during the day at all. I have copies, if you'd like to see that, from January until present time. Night call has been well-attended as well. We're now at, I would say, at about 93% compliance with that. We have, you know, 364 out of six months, you have 364 shifts you have to fill. We had 355 filled, with, without a lack of coverage. With that said, to talk about the runs, I know that we discussed this last time I got up and spoke to the board, and one of the things that I want to do, because you asked me to do, which was to give you a little more breakdown of our calls and how that works. So I did that. And currently, we're at run number 315. At this time last year, we were at, we're on number 264. So right now, we're 51 more calls over what we had last year. So we're operating more calls than ever before. We also are providing mutual aid. As, as some of you have heard, there's been fires in our other communities, and we've been responding over to those fires, as well as EMS calls in other communities. And that totals 11. So we provided mutual aid in Northampton once, East Hampton nine times, and the City of Westfield one time, in the last six months. I'm talking from January till just today. We received mutual aid 42 times, and I want to break that down, because it sounds like a big number, but when I talk about it, I think you're going to understand why that is. East Hampton, we utilized them 35 times. Out of those 35 times them coming over, we had 19 of those were paramedic intercepts. Those paramedic intercepts were after the paramedic of the day was off-shift. So the, the call deemed advanced life support, so we needed a paramedic in another community to come over. We still provided ambulance transport, we just needed that next advanced level.
So that's after five?
That's after 5:00. Again, talking towards the second shift is kind of where I'm getting at.
Okay.
So that would have been covered.
I have a question.
Yes.
So during the night shift, when you say that you have this happening, are any of them paramedics?
Yes. Yes, there's, there's three of us that, or actually, four of us that do call. Myself, who lives in town, we have Rick Paul, who lives in town, Drew Morse, and Brian Morris, who lives in South Hadley, but comes and spends the night at a buddy's house so he can take call. So out of those, yes, there, there are some times where we do have paramedics, but not a lot. Not enough, is what I should say. So out of that, 19 was intercepts. Then they did, transported 15 of our patients. A few of those were when we just had other calls going on, and a few of those were when we just didn't have the staff. But that number is way down from last year. And we used them one time for a fire mutual aid. They had a fire truck come over. For the City of Westfield, we've utilized them five times since January 1st. We utilized them two times for intercepts and three for primary transport. AMR, the private service out of Holyoke, we utilized them twice, one for an intercept and one for a primary transport. So that's just the, the first six months. And again, like I said, the scheduling is coming along very nicely. We've had a lot of people step up to the plate. We've had a lot of new members come up, and so it's, it's working well. Once again, mutual aid is everywhere. Everybody uses it, no matter where you're from. Whatever town you're in, mutual aid is utilized. So we're, we're providing, and we're asking, and receiving. So, any questions with, with that?
I've got a couple. One is, is probably an easy one. Chief was saying that Narcan is going to be carried on the cruisers. I'm assuming Narcan's on every ambulance?
Narcan has been on every ambulance for 20 years, yeah. I mean, it's, it's a, basically what they're going to be getting is what's called an atomized form of Narcan. It comes in a syringe, and on the top is this little atomizer, and it goes into the nose, and as the, the medication goes in there, it then, it acts as a narcotic antagonist. So if the patient had overdosed on narcotics, then it will reverse the, the effects of that within, within minutes. So it's, it's a very nice lifesaving thing for them to have as well, since a lot of times, they're on scene before, before, before we are, after 5:00.
Can I assume that if it's not a drug overdose, it's mistaken, they give it, that's not going to hurt the person?
It's pretty benign, yeah.
Okay.
It might cause them to puke, that's about it.
You, you said there was roughly?
To be honest?
There were about 14 people that come to training.
That was just, I'm just saying that 14 was, it was a good number. That was a well-attended number. There are times where we have seven, there are times where we have 18, because, you know, training is not a mandatory thing.
Right.
You know, it all depends.
I was just going to segue into, you've got 37 active people on the roster. Does active really mean that they're covering shifts?
Yes.
Because I know one time we had X amount, but several of them never came in.
Yes. No, I'm, I'm calling them active because all these people are either doing nights or days, or they're coming for training, or they're being involved.
So they're truly active?
I, yeah.
Okay. That's good to hear, thanks.
Yep. With the, the burning season, I just want to do, do a report on burning season. Burning season was January 15th to May 1st. For the 2016 burning season, 279 permits were issued. Out of that, 140 were seasonal, season passes, which is 25 bucks, and then 139 weekend passes for $10, for a total of 40, $4,890 that was collected. So. That is it, unless you have questions for me?
No, very thorough, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. The Highway Superintendent asked if he could be excused tonight, and I told him, fine, he has some stuff he has to take care of at home. So I guess we'll take Mr. Snyder.
Am I up?
You are up. Timing is everything, Don.
Yes, I guess so. Hi, greetings.
How's the emergency manager doing?
Well, I'm pleased to report that the state of emergency management is sound.
Very good. I guess you could go home now, right?
Basically.
Yeah.
I wanted to tell you that I just picked up today our 20 copies of the brand-new Emergency Response Guidebook, which is the most that a town of this size can have, so I have them in my car, so I will pass them out to fire police.
Okay.
Heather?
I, I don't want one.
No?
No.
Not anymore?
Not anymore.
Okay, so we have these. Our comprehensive emergency management plan was updated in May, so our plan isn't that current. Our hazard mitigation plan, I believe, has been completed by PVPC, and we should have a copy of it, I would think, probably by next month. So that is, that is complete. There are a few issues, however, I'd like to bring up. Emergency management, the budget has been reduced from 3,000 a year. This is an unpaid role. It's not that way anyplace else, but it is in this town. But it's reduced from 3,000 down to 250 dollars. That's not enough to operate on. So there's no way that I can attend meetings, get around, pick up books, get, get information out on that kind of budget. All right? Also, you should know that a town of this size, my humble opinion, for whoever has this role next time, there should be a stipend, because I don't believe you're going to find anyone to fulfill this role.
What are you thinking for stipends?
Well, small towns and the, surrounding smaller towns, and I'm talking Chesterfield as an example, they're 4,000 a year.
Do you have any other examples?
I can get them.
Yeah, if you would, thanks. Would you please bounce them to Heather?
Yes, yes. So, but I, I just feel it's important, because there's no equipment, emergency management does not have anything. Fortunately, I have everything, so I have laptops, cell phones, computers, all the rest. But I'm saying that if anybody else fulfills this role in the future, I do believe that they should have something. They should have a cellphone, they should have a port, a portable radio that works. Things, things of that nature. All right? Just my thoughts on that.
I, I personally hear you.
I know you do. Do you have any questions? No? All right.
You, you know how it works, Don.
Yeah.
When there's an emergency, everybody looks to you to do stuff. When there is an emergency, everything is silent.
We're in good shape. We're a member of the Hampshire REPC, Regional Emergency Planning Committee. I've been a member of that since 86. We're in good standing. We attend all the meetings, we attend all the exercises, we're an active community. But I'm just saying, in the future, I believe there should be some funding allocated this way.
Please submit what you think you would need to bolster that position to Heather, so that we have something to work from.
I truly think you need to look at this down the road. Oh, one more thing, Code Red, that's our Emergency Communication Network here. We pay for that partly on a grant. We can't tell if that grant's going to be funded every year or not, but it was last year. I anticipate it'll be funded next year. Last year, I believe, we took 2,400 out of my 3,000 budget. This coming year, I don't have that. I have 250 dollars.
Code Red's what, about 3,000, 3,500?
It's, it's gone up. I think it's 3,800. Don't hold me that.
No, but I'm just trying to get an idea.
Yeah. So I'm saying, I don't have the money to supplement and pay for Code Red now.
I think, just to follow up on what Charlie said, if you can submit a reasonable list of what you need, I think we should look at it sooner than later.
Okay. All right. Now, I do know, Jerry's here, right? Hi, Jerry. Jerry, Jerry, I know, was able to get a grant through the Public Health Coalition. Unsure of how that's going to work, however, I'm not sure if that will in fact cover this year's cost of Code Red. I'm not sure if it'll work that way for next year's cost of Code Red.
I would, I would never focus on that grant for next year.
I know.
Know that grant.
But I'm saying that Jerry was nice enough to have gotten that.
Going away here.
Okay, so.
It's not a discussion for this table.
That being said, okay? Am I clear?
You're very clear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would the Board of Health gracious with their presence, please?
Hi, I'm Charlie O'Connell, Chair of the Board of Health. Sorry, excuse me. I would just like to take this moment to offer our condolences to the families and first responders and citizens of Orlando who have suffered such a horrific tragedy this week. I also want to welcome our new Board Member, Ben Hogan, and I also would like to thank Lisa Laurel for putting her time in last year and helping us with, with the board. Also, I just wanted to let you know that, as we've just heard, the Health Director applied for a, and received the $1,500 grant from the Hampshire Public Health Preparedness Coalition for supplementing the cost of the Code Red for emergency notifications. We are finally signing off on the property of 59 Gun Road.
Really?
Sure will, soon, yes.
This started in 1989?
I know it did.
Okay.
And you, you started it then.
Don't blame me for this.
No. This property was cleaned up using the Attorney General's Receivership Program. The town will be receiving 14,000 to satisfy its liens on the property. We may potentially have two more properties that will be handed through the Attorney General's Office, handled. Information, we have also posted information on our webpage regarding medical waste that is not allowed to be disposed in the transfer station. Also, it is also legal to dispose Sharps and household trash. The Sharps program is very successful, as we spoke about before in the past, and those using this program are very appreciative. Approved containers for the Sharps can be picked up at the Board of Health office and returned for disposal at that office, and this is no cost to citizens. We also, the Health Director has posted information on our website regarding the mosquitoes and the Zika virus, EEE, and West Nile virus. We will have flyers available in early July for distribution when we have funds for the printing. Our septic repair program is doing really well. We currently have two more candidates that will be using this program, and we expect more in the future. We are also working on the cooling and warming center policies. The Health Director needs to meet with the Co, the Council of Aging Director to fine-tune this policy. And also, last but not least, the permits for the transfer station are now available. I guess last week, there were some concerns that we didn't have them, but they are now available in the Treasurer Collector's Office, and also, they'll be available in the transfer station this week. Any questions?
Lyme disease, ticks, educational material?
In the flyer. In the flyer, I think, yeah.
It's in the flyer with the West Nile, and Trifluoride, and Zika, and, you haven't?
Very efficient, Jerry.
You haven't gotten the Bengay fever and all the rest of that, you haven't? Okay.
Did you say you were waiting for funding to print those?
Yes. So for July, we get the funding in July to print those, yes.
Okay, so timing is okay, then, is it?
Yes.
We shouldn't have gotten them out last month or something? I didn't want you to?
I don't, I don't believe that we're in any, I mean, there's no real, we're not in any real concern. We're just trying to get information out to people.
I didn't want to see money holding up something like this.
August, September.
It's on the webpage.
It's on the webpage, it's just we don't have the flyers in hand to hand out to people.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ben.
He's not quite sure. Okay, open time for the public. Mr. Fletcher?
Bob Fletcher, 22 Gun Road. I was just coming for you to find out if there's any update on the property.
Yes, there is. It's further down in the agenda, but if the Board doesn't mind me breaking protocol.
Okay.
It's fine. We got them. All right, Mr. Fletcher, we took all your comments and concerns, and we had a executive board meeting with the Board of Health, the Highway Department, and some other parties relative to this property. We came to a conclusion that the best way to do this was to structure this in a letter to send to you, to pretty much put on the table exactly where we feel things are. So, I'm going to read the letter. The Southampton Select Board has reviewed the concerns which you have expressed at a prior public meeting, and would like to advise you as follows. One, the funding agreements. When the fouled property was originally conveyed to the town of Southampton, bankruptcy funds were used in conjunction with a grant in order to clean up the property. The bankruptcy funds have been completely exhausted. Remaining funds from the grant, $16,000, were set aside to utilize by the town in the event that additional issues with drainage and property maintenance were to arise. So that was for the cleanup of that tire dump that was out there. Two, land transfer agreement. The land is a recorded solid waste site. As such, the town of Southampton is charged to monitor and control this area. The Select Board has no interest in declaring this property a surplus. If the Select Board were interested in selling this property, it would be a sale of compliance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter Thirty-B, and would be auctioned off to the highest bidder. Three, the erosion concerns. Thank you for bringing to the Select Board's attention the sinkhole that is in the town drainage easement on the old Fowles property that the town now owns. As this location is in the middle of the field, area, we have instructed the Highway Superintendent to address this concern. At this time, we request that you do not use this area until this concern is remedied. Please keep your cattle and equipment off the area. We plan to have this corrected as soon as possible. I'm talking about at the sinkhole, not talking about the whole entire property. We trust these questions have been addressed to your satisfaction. Please feel free to contact the Town Administrator if you need more detailed information.
So, what I should assume is, it stays as is. The erosion will continue. The erosion will continue to come onto my land. And at some point, if you deem it a necessity, you might fix it.
The status of the land that the town owns is going to stay as it is. I'm not familiar with erosion on your property.
Well, if you want to take a walk, we can take a walk. But I can count at least seven places that it's coming onto my property from yours. And when you did the cleanup, it did say cleanup of tires and stabilization of the area. It was never done. So, now, this problem, which was now yours, is now mine. And so, this was the reason I came to you in the first place. Okay? This has been ignored, okay? And I think I have the right to be angry at this point. Just the drainage pipe all by itself has been eighteen years of me asking the town. I'm quite certain if the town was asking something of me, they wouldn't wait eighteen years. They would take action, and I would pay the price. Now, this is mostly the fault of the former Highway Superintendent, who continued to ignore me because he and I had a personal guff, which is neither here nor there. But that drainage pipe has been a problem since the late nineties. I was told I didn't know what I was talking about, but I know what it looks like when a pipe doesn't work anymore. Now, the sinkhole is on my property. The easement for the pipe is yours, but the pipe is on my property. I've come here very quietly and calmly and asked, and it looks like you guys are going to tell me tough. And I guess that's your right, because I have no leg to stand on. But I have been patient. I don't agree with all this stuff. You took this piece of land for the sum of a dollar to do something, and you did part of it. But now, there's problems down there that weren't taken care of. And I do think more of an effort should be made by the town.
Can you provide us with a map of the property that shows where your erosion concerns are?
Sure.
To see if they match up with the maps that we're working from?
Yep.
Thank you. I need a motion for the Board if you wish me to sign this and send it on.
I'll make the motion.
Discussion?
Sorry, do you think I have Christine's letter again?
No. This was exactly...
This is the first he's heard of our response?
I was not aware that there were so many more problems than this letter alludes to. So, I'd like to know more about those other issues, the other problems that he has for drainage damage on his property.
And that's the reason I asked him for a map?
Right.
So that we could... Now, I'm looking at this like this letter is basically putting us in a response to his questions. But if he has more clarification, we can certainly go further with that.
No, I agree. I think we're going to look into it more once we get the maps.
Right, okay.
Want to vote?
You?
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, moved. Okay, anybody else for open time in public? Guess that's that. Our continued business with the Fire Department, the Fire Chief's on vacation, so I move we pass over that.
It'd only be a one-way conversation otherwise.
Aye, you know?
So, we're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, restructuring the Select Board agenda. One of the things I've been observing, sitting on this board, and of course, when I look for something and can't find it, is the way we have set this up. We have open time for the public in the middle of our meetings. I feel that we would be better served to the public to have the open time to the public at the very beginning. Well, that was easy. Simply because people that want to speak to us don't want to listen to a lot of the other stuff that we're dealing with. And I think it'd be a good courtesy to everyone to let them in first, to let them speak first.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Can we, I like that idea, but can we also put it further down? Have a second, quick session for the public? Because a lot of times, I think the conversation that goes on brings up questions. That's my opinion.
Yes, that's exactly how, that's exactly how I felt the last time we had brought this up.
So, you want two open times for the public? One at the very beginning. I'm not being critical, I'm just...
Well, I'm not being critical of you being critical, that's okay.
Don't you criticize me.
I was going to say truncated sessions. Maybe, you know, open time for the public in the beginning is more time. Below, it's five minutes max total or whatever.
Right.
Yeah. That's what I'm thinking.
Right. I think that's a great idea.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so, let's do that. The other part to this has to do with policies and rules relative to running the meeting. I think we should have on our agenda this statement. And this statement is so that everybody sort of understands where we're coming from. So, we don't have people in here that walk in and expect us to have a twenty-minute debate on something when we're not even prepared for it. Would you, I'll read it. It's that way everybody understands what I'm talking about. "All agendas are subject to change. Items requiring extensive discussion or period, prior research should be placed on a future agenda so that the issue can be, receive appropriate attention. To have an item placed on the agenda, we ask that requests be made to the Select Board's office no later than a Wednesday prior to the meeting. Please leave the room if you need to converse with other members of the audience. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please raise your hand in order to be recognized by the Chair. Please state your name for the record before you begin to speak on the issues." Simply because we have people that want to speak, and I have to play a guessing game if they really want to speak or just they're not sure. Put your hand up, and we know. The other part to it is, is we have people that have long discussions on topics that we're not even ready for. So, having them understand the fact that they can bring it forward, but put it on the agenda for the following meeting so we can do a little research on it, it helps all of us give a better answer at the other end. And finally, the Statement of the Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Twenty-three-C, Regulations of Participating by Public in an Open Meeting. No person shall address a public meeting of a governmental body without permission of the Presiding Officer at such meeting. And all persons shall, at the request of the Presiding Officer, be silent. If, after warning from the Presiding Officer, a person persists in disorderly behavior, said officer may order him to withdraw from the meeting. And if he does not withdraw, may order a constable or any other person to remove him and him in some convenient place until the meeting is adjourned." I don't like the word confined, because I'm not about to incarcerate anybody. But basically, it's to remind everybody that there is a general law that if you become disorderly, you can be escorted out of here. Not that this happens at this group very often, but I think if we're going to do this, and we're going to do it in a professional manner, we should have that as a statement on the agenda.
I guess my only comment, I agree with all that, but I just, the Wednesday before the Tuesday, we meet every two weeks. I'm concerned that we're being too restrictive for the public. And I, because we're here for the public, so I want to make sure we, they have adequate time to speak, adequate time to put things on the agenda, you know? I don't want to dictate to the public, they should give us input and feedback. So, I'm okay with that, as long as we don't...
Well, I'm looking at this as a work in progress.
Okay.
You know, and this is going to flow. If we see that it's not working, then we'll change it again.
Okay.
That's the way I look at it.
Yeah, and my only...
When someone comes in with a problem with the agenda, where they can come in and address it, but to have a helpful conversation, you want it to be put on the agenda, correct?
Right, right. If somebody comes in here and says that, oh, they have a dangerous tree on Valley Road. Okay, tell us about the dangerous tree. But if you're going to get into about the family list and all the rest of the stuff, and the fact that it's not a blue spruce, it's a hemlock, well, it's time to...
Right.
I agree.
Okay, all right. So, moved on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's go back to the work. Improved on private property authorization to sign... I'd like to move over to private property issue at this point. Pass over it.
Pass over it?
Yeah. All in favor? Authorization to sign contracts. Well, Heather could come up and explain it, but basically, what it comes down to is we're supposed to be signing all the contracts. Because of the fact that I'm around town a lot, would it be all right if the Board authorized me to sign the contracts? If the Board approves the contracts, so the signature keeps moving forward?
I think at the Chair, as the Chair, that's appropriate.
Right, if it's been approved by us.
If it's been approved.
I agree.
Of course.
Heather, is that what you were looking for with that?
I think it's just a general recognition to make sure that we have contracts that aren't out there in other departments that aren't necessarily being looked at by anyone. We, I think we mentioned the last meeting, that the town's bylaws actually only authorize the Select Board or the Procurement Officer to sign contracts. So, if it's a procurement thing and we're doing a PO, I can sign those, no problem. Under the authorization that the Board has appointed me as the Chief Procurement Officer and the Compliance to Mass. General Law. If it's a general contract for other services or something else, you know, generally with, you'll see later in the, later in the agenda, FRTA things, all that stuff, it should really be signed by the Select Board on behalf of the town. It should be signed by the Board of Assessors, Board of Health. We have to look at a couple of things just to make sure we're not missing a general law that trumps the bylaw, that is the current understanding. So, yes.
Do we want to put it in there and keep names out? The Chair has the authority, once it's been approved by the Board, absence of the Chair or the Vice Chair. So, that way, it carries forward?
Sure.
Doesn't put any names to it?
Sure, because like next week, I'm going to be gone.
Yeah, exactly. And even next year, when whoever's here, you know?
I'll be gone.
Do you need a motion?
I would like a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, done. All right, so now, we are into year-end line transfers. Heather, you played a role of Vicky tonight.
Thanks. All right, so this is the third set of budget transfers, line item transfers you do at the end of the year, beginning in May first, going to the end of July. These are to cover anything that may have been going negative. Vicky's been doing a great job working with all departments, making sure they're monitoring the accounts and seeing what was having an issue. If you have the sheet of paper in front of you, on the left-hand side, you see the account that has been overdrawn. On the right-hand side, you see where the transfer is going to be coming from. So, the first account that was of issue was the Assessor expenses. They were negative by, were projected to be negative by about five hundred dollars. Three-member Board of Assessors and Principal Assessor are required, under mandatory law, to actually attend these classes, plus we compensate them mileage. As a result, we are actually taking that over from the account that we have. We will be having additional funds at the end of the year, the Assistant Assessor Wage Line, and that same amount. The next overdrawn account is the Tax Headed Expense, which is currently in the negative, or projected to be in the negative, by fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents. This is a bill for a land corp that's currently in foreclosure process. And we will be taking those funds from the Treasurer Collector expenses in the same amount. The next one is the Gas and Electric of Larrabee. We're currently negative by three thousand. We will be, and there's one more piece. The next one is the Larrabee Building Expense, which is also negative by two hundred. Both of these items are remaining bills to the end of the year and to cover the negative amount. And they will be covered by the Town Hall Building Expenses, an amount totaling three thousand two hundred dollars. Lastly, the overdrawn account is the General Highway Wages at this point. It's overdrawn by five thousand thirty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. And we will be covering with extra funds from the Winter Road Wages in the amount of five thousand thirty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. Questions? Thank you.
Need a motion now?
Move?
I'll make a motion. We accept the budget transfers.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So, moved?
Is Heather to speak on this or ask a question? I walked over.
I didn't see that hand go up. Yes, Mike.
Michael Regenberg, One Forty-Four East Street, a member of the Finance Committee. My question was just on the electric and gas usage. So, is that? We budgeted a certain amount based off of previous year's usage. We entered into contracts to reduce our electric cost for a portion of last year, right? So, is this three thousand? I guess my question is, are we saving money with the account, or why are we over? Because the gas and electric usage for the season is down, you know, historically. So, just a question of where we went wrong in the budgeting while we're over.
So, I don't have the expense sheet in front of me, Mike, but if I can recall correctly, we had started out the budget year with a much higher number, reduced it mid-year because we didn't believe we were going to expend it all. And then, it turns out, we were about halfway between what we thought. So, I think we had originally seventeen thousand, we reduced it to ten thousand, and we find out now we're, we're going to be ending in about thirteen thousand. So, we're about halfway on the guess.
Well, I don't, I'm not boasting, but we did recommend you not reduce that line item months ago. It was, you know, of all things to reduce in your fiscal year, you know, utility bills, you shouldn't reduce those mid-year. You never know what's going to happen. I mean, even, I mean, think of it this way, if your winter was worse, you could be in a deeper hole right now. So, just advisement towards future years. If we're looking to reduce the line item, utilities are not the areas you'd like, recommend you do that. My hope is that the savings aligns with our budgeted amount next year. And I know we had talked about another power purchase agreement with another solar facility. Maybe it was a HCOG organization. But just, you know, we just need to be mindful of where we're cutting these costs because it has come back to bite us at this point. So, we're, yes, we have the funds extra, but where else are those funds going to be needed for transferring for the budget?
Thank you, Mike. Review and discussion of personnel policy procedure changes. Jackie, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I would like to open up a discussion on when, where, and who will review the new Personnel Bylaws, Rules and Regulations Manual. While the Select Board appreciates the hard work the Personnel Policies and Procedure Board did on this most important manual, I would like to give the Town Department Heads ample time to voice their concerns and questions regarding how these... ample time to voice their concerns and questions regarding how these personnel bylaws, rules, and regulations will affect their employees. Therefore, I move that we have a working meeting on the first floor meeting room in mid-September when all the select board members, department heads, and the public can attend. Then and only then can we find, can we finally make the personnel bylaw, rules, and regulations manual a fair and acceptable document that we can all agree on.
I hear a second. I want to do a second for discussion.
Discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I would like to have somebody from the Personnel Board up at the podium for a minute, and I would like to wrap my head around how this is working at this point in time, so correct me if I'm wrong. I hear what you're saying. I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I think your approach needs tuning. At this point in time, this document's been proofed by town council, and now it's scheduled for hearings with the Personnel Board. If I'm correct with that, that would be the proper process for this. Once it goes through that vetting, then they will let us know what tuning is necessary, but it should give department heads and everyone else ample time to comment on it. Art, can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yeah, I can try. Outlawrence, 113 Cricket Ledge Road, and also the chairman of this fantastic group, excuse me. According to the bylaw, the Personnel Board owns this particular document. It's owns it from the point of view of development. To give you an idea, we've been developing this for two years, almost to the day. I think the last public meeting we had was on, on June 19th, 2014. We've had a, quite a number of iterations of this. You should see my, my files, it's how much memory I've been dedicating to this. And giving you just a quick timeline, January 28th was when we met first with the Select Board. Liz Moulton was there, Charlie, John, also Heather, attended that meeting. We reviewed basically line by line the, the whole document. February 18th, we had another meeting. This was composed of Liz, Charlie, John, and Jackie were at that one, and again, we, we finished the document up that, that night. We made all the corrections that we had determined, and beyond that, Charlie had also sent some comments, which we included. It went off to town council right after that, and unfortunately, we hit right in the middle of town meeting time, so it took quite a long time for the, for Michelle, is that, Michelle to review that. She did a phenomenal job, she reviewed it literally line by line. The three things we did include that we didn't have, we added a corey policy that Copman and Page recommended, that's in the appendix, appendix A. We also utilized their Family Me, Family Medical Leave Act and Small Necessity Leave Policy, which was considerably better than ours. And then the last thing we added was a domestic abuse leave policy, which we didn't have. We included, put all that in to the, the document, and then on June 1st, I sent out email to all, all the department heads and appointing authorities that we would be having a, a public meeting on June 23rd at 6:00 P.M. in this, in this room. We also put up a, a notice on the bulletin board, and we also put it in the, in the Gazette as a, as an advertisement. Consequently, there, which I wasn't aware of, there were some activities in town. It ended up being some things going on over at the library, and we decided, we, we normally meet on a Thursday, this was, the 23rd is a Thursday, we meet twice a month, so we decided to have another meeting at 4:00 P.M., so anybody coming out of work would be able to attend that, and especially the library personnel could come over and, and still go back for their, for their, thing they're having at the, at the library that night. We've confirmed everything in the bylaw. The bylaw says we have to give 10 days' notice to the, to the employees. We've put a lot of effort, as Jackie mentioned, into this. We've, we've just talked to just about everybody, including neighboring towns, including insurance companies, you name it, we've, we've gone through the, through the process here. We think it's a, it's a very good document. We have real expertise on the board, including H.R. directors and so on and so forth, and like I say, we are totally going by the, the bylaw, which says we, we need to give 10 days' notice to the employees. In this case, we, we gave approximately 18 days to the, to the employees, and I think, you know, that should be more than enough to, to understand the document, to come into the public meeting. We would take testimony, we would try to answer questions, and then have a combined meeting with you folks to hammer out what the final thing is. You have the ultimate, you're the ones that sign it, and, but we really need to get it in, in place. There are so many holes in the current one, it's unbelievable. It's cost the town lots of money over the, over the years, and we just needed to plug those gaps. That's all I have, Mr. Stramming, thank you.
Please stay there.
Jim Palermo is another member of the Personnel Board.
Jim Palermo, Glendale Road. And I, you know, correct me, but I think it was our intent that the meetings that we're going to hold on the 23rd are primarily informational, to explain any section of the, the new laws, bylaws, or regulations, so that people will understand them, and then, as my understanding, the Select Board was going to hold a hearing, and at which that time, people could raise their objections. As far as, and correct me, Art, if I'm wrong in my understanding here, but pretty much the document that we prepared and submitted to council constitutes our recommendation to the board, and we're fully willing to explain that to everybody or anybody at those two meetings, but thereafter, as it rests with the Board of Selectment to either approve or reject or modify, that people should be raising their objections to you. Most of the changes deal with procedural. I mean, for example, the old bylaws limited the length of time you could have a temporary appointment to a position. That caused all sorts of problems because sometimes the hiring process hadn't been completed within the time allotted for a temporary position, and we're stuck, you know. Well, this way, we have the ability to be flexible about it, to expand that. So, most of the changes are procedural that affect our operations and don't impact employees directly. Obviously, there are some provisions in there that do affect employees directly, and I'm sure that that's what the employees care about, and they can raise those concerns to the Select Board. We invite them to come to our meeting so we can explain it, why we've done it, how it done, what we think the impact's going to be, but ultimately, it's the Select Board that has the authority to change that.
So, if I understand this correctly, you're going to have an open meeting to-
Two. One at 4:00 and one at 6:00.
To basically educate people on all the rest of this. After that, you're closing the meeting. Are you, you're taking public comment at that?
I, I think our purpose is to explain it.
But we will take comment.
Yeah, and if there's something we think you should be aware of, we would take note.
There may be typos, there may be things like that.
Well, there's, that's almost, you know, what I'm, what I'm getting at is because it's the end of June and we have holidays at the beginning of July, would it be possible that you have your hearings as prescribed, but allow public comment to be brought in by letter, email, or whatever for like two weeks after the fact, so that that way there, when you present that package to us, we will have more material to digest before we set our hearing date?
Yeah, I mean, we just need to be careful, Charlie, because the bylaw says we have to respond in 20 days after the meeting, so-
We have to respond to?
Whether we accept it, whether we reject it, or, you know, there's three, three conditions.
Whether the PQB accepts or rejects?
Exactly.
I mean, you, you can have your meetings and close the meeting in the, we can give a period of response to anybody who wants to, and they can direct it to Heather.
Us, yeah.
Yeah, and that way, you'll meet your dates.
Sure. Two things, I don't think we should call our meeting a hearing. It's an information session.
That's good, because I need to know-
And anything that we feel is pertinent, obviously, we're going to pass along to the Select Board. I would, I would say that after we close our meeting, is the Select Board under any constraint, time constraint?
We're under the constraint.
Yeah, so, it's up to you.
Let me read this. This may be- Personnel Policy Procedure Board shall present the proposed rules and regulations and the purpose of such rules and regulations at a public meeting. Any person may attend the public meeting, speak, and present information. Within 20 days after such public meeting, the board shall consider the proposed rules and regulations to determine whether to, number one, recommend that the rules and regulations be adopted with or without modifications, two, reject the rules and regulations, or three, indicate further study is necessary. So, we have to respond to that in 20 days.
Need to go up there.
This, I'm the developer, I'm the citizen, the person that has spent thousands of dollars to get to this point, invested in this. My understanding is the public hearing is closed. Peter Pellegrini, 76 Cricket Ledge Road, sorry.
Mr. Pellegrini, I think you're thinking, I, I don't think you're talking about a personnel bylaws, I think you're talking about the solar bylaws, or more specifically, the subdivision bylaws. We're not talking about that right now.
Okay.
Personnel Board.
I, I thought this was the-
No, it's Personnel Policies.
Sorry.
No problem.
My apologies. No, what's coming up next?
So, yeah, I mean, so we have 20 days to respond, and, you know, and obviously, we need to sit down with you once we, you know, get all the data together and we come up with a negotiated response to this. I mean, I think we're pretty much there. I mean, my God, we worked, I don't know, how many hours, John and Charlie, on this already, and Liz is certainly bringing a lot of information in on a constant basis.
And legal review, so that's key.
And what?
And legal review.
Yeah, and, and she did an excellent review of it, too.
Yeah, I mean-
And again, in my opinion, after we've completed our hearing and gathered the comments and stuff, the bell's in your court, and if you want to wait till September to do it, I would urge you not to, but that's your choice. We don't tell the Select Board what to do.
I personally would like to, I'm going to go to the meeting, so I'd like to see how that comes up.
Yeah, I'll be away, that's the reason.
Okay, well, we don't want more than a couple of us there anyways.
Right.
It's a public meeting, you're welcome, John.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we could all show up.
I don't know, can we all show up, Heather?
A public meeting?
As long as you don't deliberate, but whenever we generally have anything that looks like it's going to be an appearance where the board is present, we generally post.
Okay.
Is June 23rd, 4:00 to 6:00 at Lyerby?
4:00 and 6:00.
Four here, in this room.
Four and at 6:00.
And that might be a good idea, if a couple of you show up at 4:00 and a couple of us at 6:00. I'm going to 6:00 myself.
You know, if I were on the, the Board of Selectmen, again, I'm certainly not telling you what to do. But I, I don't know if I'd want to make a public commitment or statement until the board has had the opportunity to deliberate and speak as a body. I mean, I think you'd be more than welcome there, it's, it's an open meeting, but I have unfortunately been at meetings where elected officials, and not necessarily in this town, have sort of monopolized the meeting and really interfered with the rights of the citizens to keep talking. You know, we can't do that, we've done that before, we've thought about it. I, I think this should be sort of open for the public to express whatever they want to express.
Yeah, I agree.
And if I were member of the board, I, I think I'd want to deliberate with my colleagues before I made any formal statements or pronouncements on anything. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Can I ask a question? Just a format, I'm brand new to this, I started reading the document trying to-
Yep.
-comprehend all this, and what is the format? Are you going to, at, at this public hearing, are you just going to start taking questions, or are you-
Informational session.
Information, you're going to-
Yeah, yeah, basically, we open it up, I'll read a statement, you know, what we publish in the paper, et cetera, et cetera, and what we're expecting, and we'll introduce the members of the board, and then we will open it up like we did last time and, and take the comments.
Are you going to-
Answer the questions, hopefully.
Are you going to start speaking about the changes, or are you just going to take questions?
We can do it either way, what people want. You know, I think people, the employees are pretty familiar with this because this is the second time we've gone through and, and made some of these changes, so, but yeah, I mean, it's hard to say, Jim, at the present time, but we try to keep it as open as possible, yes. And I know, really, there's going to be discontent, there's going to be people not happy, you're never going to satisfy everybody, but I think we've, we've tried to do everything we, we can, and within the budget of, of the town, we, we've had some really major liability situations here, you know, 26 weeks of, of 75% pay, you know, for anything that happens anywhere. I mean, you know, what company supports that type of stuff? Yeah, you go out and get your own disability insurance, and generally, it's really cheap, and, you know, maybe a rich company like yours, and, and ones that I work for, they, they pay for it, but in most cases, they don't. So, I, I know that's a big, that was a big issue last time, it'll be another big issue. We've added a sick time leave policy, which we never had here, to try to compensate for that 26 weeks. We, we've toned down the vacation to do it by hours, where before, it was done by weeks. So, somebody working four days a, a, a week here, we're saying, hey, I can get five days. Well, you don't, because you only work four days, and you're, it's all based on your PCF and how many hours you work. So, if it's 31 hours, it's 31 hours times the number of years you've been here, and that's your vacation time. That was never resolved before.
Can I just follow up to a question with Jim? I mean, to quote a wise man, I'm not on the board and I wouldn't tell the board what to do, but is it possible to just have a sheet that highlights the changes, so you go over those at the minute? Because I think-
Yeah, I can do that.
From my point of view, it'd be nice to say it was only this, so we don't have to go through the whole thing.
I mean, I hate to say that, because, you know, we've changed everything. I mean, you know, because it's-
We started from-
We started from scratch.
Okay, so-
We went through everything that was not working well and was causing us problems with dealing with other boards and other departments, and we've tried to smooth that up, but that's the procedural stuff.
It's not the stuff that I probably would even put on that teaching that you're probably running out to. Anything that's going to affect any of the town-
Employees, right.
We can put the major stuff, holidays, you know, vacations, sick time.
That'll get the conversation.
Yeah, we certainly could put that down, because you're right, that's, that's what, and Shannon's right, that's what the employees are-
That'd be great.
Thanks.
And a lot of the procedural stuff, yeah, unless you read it all, all the fine print, but it does help us because we've had issues, and I think we've tried to correct most of those.
Well, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. I'd like to, to say my observation is, is the motion's a little bit well-intended but premature, because it's going to be the Board of Selectmen that make the ultimate decisions. So, I would suggest that the motion get withdrawn.
Unless you want to see your intentions about it, or your intentions.
Or just take a vote?
No, I don't-
Well, I'm looking at the fact that they're going to have their hearing, and then it's going to come to us, and then we're going to decide when we're going to have a meeting to do this.
I agree.
So, trying to pick a date in the future, I think, is premature.
Right, right, but what, no, what I'm trying to do is give the department heads the opportunity to voice their concerns, but some may be on vacation. I just want to make, make sure everybody is heard and that this, this document is so important, and I don't want to leave anybody out, and I have heard them personally be alarmed that this is going so quickly, even though I know they've worked really hard and they've had meetings, but they're still not ready yet, and I just didn't want to push it through for-
And Jackie, I don't disagree with you, I'm hearing the same thing from the departments, but at this point in time, I still think your motion's premature. I think that they need to have their hearing, they need to get back to us, and then we need to see what the comments are and decide what we're going to do with this.
Right, oh, I don't think that they should not have their meeting, or their hearing, I'm, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that I want the department heads to be able to voice their concerns, and that, you know, if they do it there, hopefully, you know, we can-
Hope it gets back to us.
Deal with it, you know, like we, we just, we don't push this through too fast, that's all I'm getting at, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but I think what- But I think what Charlie's trying to say is that we can hold a meeting whenever we want.
Right, exactly, as long as we can do that.
Once we decide, yeah.
Yes, then I'm good, so I withdraw.
Withdraw the motion?
Yes.
And the second?
Okay, then I take it the matter's moving forward, and we don't take any action?
I think it'll progress at the proper pace, I think.
Okay, next topic, annual appointments, that has been rescheduled for the meeting on the 20th. Topic after that, townwide departmental concerns, including right-of-way violations trespass. I have Moosebrook down in E. What, what happened was, is that the latest agenda slid it to E, because they're actually two different issues. I'm not hearing any feedback on that, should we just pass over on this? I'm on.
No, I'm sort of lost.
New, new business.
It's handwritten in here.
A, B, C. D.
Put his E now, saying, concerns are deep, is that it?
Right.
Number two, new business, yes, showing on Moosebrook, is that the permanent concern?
Well, Moosebrook is, is after this, right now it's.
Well, it's the same, it's the same, Charlie.
The same thing?
It's one the same.
Oh, all right, well, I know the Moosebrook one, because I was out there today. They've hired an engineer, they're going to resolve this thing, I don't think we need any action at this point. I was out there with the highway superintendent.
Can you brief, I mean, I, I don't know what the issue is.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, let's be, let me back up a little bit more. There's an individual building a house on top of one of the hillsides up there, they put drainage in there for a driveway, they went ahead and they put a culvert in the road, and directed the drainage from the driveway down into the roadway area, and the highway department, the building inspector, the fire chief, the, the board of health have all been working with this individual to try to get this resolved, because a curb cut permit was never taken out. But at this point in time, what my understanding is, he's hired an engineer, the engineer's going to put a plan together, and it's being addressed by the department heads.
So is this an owner or a builder that's doing it for a spec house?
Uh, it's an owner who is the builder.
Okay, but.
So it's a very steep road, is what you're saying?
Very steep banked coming down the hill. There, there, you know, it's just a, a long swale, and it comes down, and it goes into the gravel part of Moosebrook Road, so there's an erosion issue down there. In fact, there's always been an erosion issue even long before that house was proposed.
So you were out there today, now?
I was out there today.
In your estimation, have they disturbed more than 40,000 square feet? Because we had this at the planning board, we signed up for the permit, we specifically notated that if they disturb more than 40,000 square feet, there's another procedure they have to go through, stormwater management, which would be all part of this.
I'm not going to say I know definitively, but given the fact that they blasted for the house and all that, someone should go out there with a tape measure.
Sue, Dan, I drive by there, I drive by there every day, 40,000, 40,000 square feet is almost an acre, and.
You are, sir?
Dan Pellegrini, 76, so I just, I just.
Give the microphone.
Yeah, I just drive by there every day, going in the brief field and ice build, so I look at houses, and 45,000 square feet is pretty close to an acre, and I don't see it anywhere near that, just if that's worth anything.
I personally don't know, I know that they've flattened the top of the hill up there, but I can't tell from the roadway.
Correct, correct.
What's really there.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, if, if there is in fact that, it would actually control the whole washing out issue, or.
So, so it sounds like maybe Tom could check?
Yeah, maybe we have Tom.
Heather, you want to tell the building inspector about that concern, about stormwater management with that driveway?
Again, with stormwater management, actually, it was under Randall's jurisdiction.
Okay.
I can let him know, but he is then going to say, he was asked to, you should call Randall.
Well, Randall's on top of this, because he's the one that took me out there to show me the property.
Is he looking for the 40,000 cut over? So maybe we should make him aware of that, just so he can relook at it.
All right, let Randall know that, then. Okay, next issue is signature of appointments. Personnel change forms. What is this, this is like, assistant treasurer, collector, Don. Gero. This is basically a replacement of a town employee. It's been approved by the PP board, finance committee, and awaits our approval. Any motions?
If it met all the criteria, I'll make a motion, we assign it.
Appears to.
With all those signatures, I'm, I'm okay with it.
All in favor?
We're going to need a second.
Second. Tim seconded it. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye's got it. Oh, okay, year-end vacation carryovers. Heather, would you like to articulate this?
So we have been sending out letters to all of the department heads, so that folks know that these are something that's coming up. Generally, the current personnel rules do, does address some individuals, otherwise, it's covered in personnel contracts. So far, you have three requests. If the board does approve these, I would recommend approval contingent upon approval of personnel policies if required. The reason being is because it's not always that straightforward. There's the first request, which is for myself, to carry over a week, I submitted a letter to the board. Tom Quinlan had sent me an email requesting to carry over a week. He is the building commissioner, he would fall under strictly the personnel rules, and I believe the rules say for extraordinary reasons only. Then Todd J. Ross Foreman actually is in the request of carrying over one week as well, and his gets a little more dicey because it's actually under a union contract. So you can see to verify that we can do this for any of these, or all of these, three different documents have to be referred to. And some require Tom Quinlan's, at least, I'm not sure about Todd's, but Tom's would require also approval from the triple PB.
And Tom is for one week?
Mm-hmm.
Will you say why?
Uh, he, I don't think he ever got to it, he's been out for trainings, so I, I don't have anything in my email, I do not know. If the board wishes we could carry over any or all that they wish, the board does have a meeting next week to do the pieces for Safe Roots to School.
If I remember correctly, in your contract, that's the easy one to do.
It's the most straightforward of the three.
Yeah, so, I'll make a motion, we let Heather carry over a week per her contract terms.
Second?
Looking for a second?
Oh, oh, I thought Charlie said second.
Yep.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Had carried. Uh, Tom Quinlan, do I hear a motion for Tom? Well, again, you're saying Tom Quinlan has to go through the PQB to get it cleared. Well, how about we make a motion to approve it based, contingent on approval by.
He's right here.
Go ahead.
That's not a procedural thing, this is not.
Yeah, I'd rather hear from.
Excuse me, the, the, the current bylaw says it has to be extraordinary, so, just, I'm just bringing that up. If we don't know what it is, it's not extraordinary, right?
I'd like to get more information, and just personally let Tom know that's what the bylaw says, and he can come back with a response.
So you'd like to continue this one until next week?
I guess we have to.
Okay. And Todd Geras?
There's an email that's attached, from Randall, on behalf of his employee. And I don't know if he's covered specifically under the personnel, or if he's under the union side, so I can look into that if you want, just to double check for next week. Uh, do I have the email handy? Yes. So, the email read as follows, I would like to request one week, 40 hours of vacation carryover time for Todd J. Ross, he currently has 135 hours to use, this doesn't need to be explained, oh, sorry. As I read, it's late, sorry, Randall, you didn't hear that, please. But essentially, Randall had added that he's a very good employee, and he doesn't, he comes to work every day, he doesn't use his vacation time, but he doesn't want to see him lose every, the entire set of hours. But again, I understand, and I'm happy to look it up in the contract to make sure that it's covered.
So he's, he's going to have like 95 hours left?
That he can't carry over, that he loses, correct.
So he's going to lose 95 hours?
He's not going to work until next this week.
Works every year.
Yes, he should do it every year. I questioned it last year, and I'll give you a rest.
I mean, I, I'm speaking as a manager outside of here, I mean, I look at it as my job to make sure people don't lose time and, and take it, and, I don't know if we can force them to take it or not, but I think it's, it's, we should go as close to that as possible. So I, I think, well, we can talk to Randall off, off the side, but in this particular case, I don't think we have much to say. So with that in mind, if it's per the union contract, I'll make a motion, we allow him to carry 40 over.
Is there a, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried. No license and permits?
So sorry.
That's okay. Contracts, we have a paramedic intersect contract agreement with, it looks like, Northampton Fire. This is normal routine, what we do every year. In the past, I guess the fire chief used to sign these things, or somebody else, but it wasn't us, but we're the ones that's supposed to, that's why it's in front of us. I read it, I didn't see anything that alarmed me. Do I hear a motion to accept the contract?
I'll make the motion, we accept the contract.
Let's second it for discussion.
Second for discussion.
So, is this standard, is the same thing we do every year?
My understanding that this is standard with the Northampton Fire, so that they provide mutual aid to us when necessary. I haven't heard anything to the contrary. We don't need to vote on it tonight, though, if you want more information, but it'll be flipped over to the next selectmen's meeting, just to know.
I guess my, whoops, Heather's not here. But I guess my, my only question is, it has an indemnity clause from us to Northampton, and normally, those aren't legal to accept indemnification clauses. You can't do it for the state, cities and towns, I'm pretty sure you can't either, but Heather would know better for that. That's, that's in 6B.
Well, if you'd like, let's table this in the next meeting.
Well, I'd like to have Heather take some action on it in between, though.
Yes.
Okay, sure.
Now, is this something we should have a legal look at, to enter an agreement like this?
Well, I'm not sure.
Not warrant that.
Well, I, I think Heather would know, I'm not sure if the state indemnification exemption is the same as a city and town. I'm familiar with the state, so I don't want to say it's true, but every time there's an indemnification, I like to check it out. So I'll make the motion, we table it till next meeting, in the meantime, Heather can check out section 7B indemnification.
Well, you have another motion, should we withdraw the other one and change it?
Yes, you're right. I'll withdraw my first motion.
And second.
So now I'll make the motion, that we table it till next meeting, and Heather check on section 7B for the ability of the town to indemnify another town, and if we can't, then I think she needs to contact Northampton, City of Northampton, and request that that be removed. Actually, I'd recommend it be removed anyways.
Okay, so the motion is simplified?
Simplify, hold this over till next meeting, Heather will check on section 7B of the Northampton Fire Agreement, because it has an indemnity clause. Ideally, we'd like to remove it, if possible, or at, at least verify that we can indemnify another city or town.
Second. Alls in favor?
I know.
So, hold on a second, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, so section seven?
Seven, or I'm sorry, 6B.
6B.
Yeah.
Transport agencies shall indemnify and hold harmless Northampton, and each of its agents, da-da-da. I was revising on the provision, paramedic intercept services. I don't know, I, I understand, what's, what's the concern with the clause, though, John? Because they're essentially saying they're still held liable for negligent or other wrongful acts of the agent employer officer of Northampton Fire Rescue or City of Northampton.
Yeah. Okay, I'm, I'm confused on something else, maybe, did we take this agreement, did we get this directly from Northampton? Because up in the first paragraph, it says between the City of Northampton and the town of Amherst, Amherst Fire Rescue. I missed that the first time around.
Um, so we probably should, uh.
Yeah, proofread this.
Yeah, we just, we simply got, I sent Charlie.
I didn't see it either.
I, I read through it once and didn't see it, so, obviously, that's another issue, because if actually, Amherst Fire Rescue is a transport agency, I'm good.
Yeah. You make them liable.
So those two issues, yeah.
All right, so we table it, go back to it. Okay, second one is amendment to the Glendale Road Phase 2 Final Design, I have no clue on that one.
So this was a chapter 90 project with Glendale Road, for the purpose of Glendale Road, this is phase two, so they're finishing up things, the contractor's doing the work. This contract is before the board to sign, because as we've talked about previously, the board should be the one signing these documents. Hold on, let me grab it. So essentially, the agreement is with Van Haas Hagen Brussels Inc., VHB, and it was for the final design, Route 10 to Palmeroy Meadow Road, Southampton, Mass. It has a job number. This project, the scope of the work was actually outlined back in February 1998, so I know you all were here when that happened and saw all the details. The description of the amendment essentially told me that the project would be developed in separate design phases. Phase 1, Palmeroy Meadow Road to East Hampton Town Line, which was a 1.68 miles, and Phase 2, Route 10 to Palmeroy Meadow Road, which was 0.72 miles. Phase 1 of the project, including design and construction, was completed in '06. Phase 2 of the project has completed the design, 25% design phase, met all the permitting, and designed public hearing in 75% of design phase. So they talk further about their description of their services, they talk about their two tasks of the 100% design documents, and additional environmental documentation and permitting, final right-of-way road plans, and then the final design documents. So essentially, they break it down for you, they give you the total fee estimate and the costs. This has all been approved already by Mass DOT, remember, we use chapter 90 funds on this. We simply need the signature of the town in order to go for and actually be able to pay this vendor through chapter 90 funds. Any questions for me? We did the best we can, and not Randall, so.
This is an additional cost, correct?
So this is the final design, apparently, my understanding is they do think these things in pieces, so every step of the way, they go back out and assess, you know, what's next, and the steps and the costs.
Yeah, I'm looking at it, it's an amendment to the agreement, so to me, that says that 69,000 or whatever is an additional cost, so do we have adequate chapter 90 funds to cover this?
We do have adequate chapter 90 funds to cover this and then some, yes. We've already actually been approved for the chapter 90 funds, the only piece in the process that is holding up the rest of the work is the signature from the select board.
Okay, so there's no chance we're going to get, excuse the expression, stuck with this from our budget?
No, this is all, this is, I have the chapter 90 fund.
Okay.
Did your campaign in the public, you think?
Yeah, just give it a minute to go back and forth.
Um, let's see, this came from, let's see, the project manager, VHB's amendment to complete the final. complete the final design efforts for Glendale Road. Please review and let us know if you have any questions, comments, concerns, require additional. Um, let's see. I think that's it because the rest of it goes into the East, East Street Bridge.
Do I hear a motion to move this?
I mean, obviously, it needs to be done. And if we have the chapter ninety funds to adequately cover it, and this is just the final part of the design, then I'll make the motion, we accept the amendment.
It's my understanding, this is all done. This is reimbursement for the-
I think this is the final piece, based on the way I read this, in my understanding. Attached amendment to complete the final design efforts for Glendale Road.
All right. And it's dated April twenty-second.
Do you mind if I let this individual speak?
Oh, you got a motion on the floor, no second.
Right.
What was the motion?
Oh, you gotta at least a second, or I can rescind it, or-
No, I'll, I'll second.
So they can't speak in the middle of the vote?
Right.
Who wants to take the vote?
Didn't speak. All right. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Sir?
Dan Pellegrini, Curricula Drive Road. My only concern was, we have a plan from nineteen ninety-eight, and the question is how relevant is that plan to the growth and where the town is today? And shouldn't we be reviewing that type of plans and growth for this town? And the reason why I ask that is, we do have a lot of chapter ninety money, but we also have a lot of needs around town that are pretty pressing from a road standpoint. And to see a cost increase of seventy thousand dollars over an original bid in the private sector, that wouldn't fly. And then also, we would never not revisit a plan that is put in place in nineteen ninety-eight.
Thank you.
So that, that was the only question and comment that I would have had from, from the town.
It's my understanding that this is the final as-built plans. The construction's already taken place, it's all been done. It's the as-built plans to finish it up for the recording of the, the road and the sidewalks and that.
Then how could, if the construction's done, as-built plans be seventy thousand dollars more?
That I don't know.
Then why would we just sign that and not ask that question? Because they're under contract, and that was obviously quoted beforehand for them to be on budget. And as-built, I can see overruns in construction, but doing as-built documentation for seventy thousand dollar override, and as we're looking for money to fix our town roads?
What they're doing is they're updating the, the current contract documents. I guess you'd have to see all five pages, based on the Mass DOT and the Federal Highway Administration changes subsequent to the phase being submitted. It's all addressed in here, all what they're doing.
I guess it goes back to the underlying issue, is why I've been coming to the meetings and will continue to come, is because I would really like to understand, we have nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollars in our chapter ninety funds. Seven hundred thousand dollars of that has been allocated or asked for by Randall. And my, and I would like to understand who is doing checks and balances, prioritizing what projects and what we are spending that money on. It's a lot of money, and I, I live on a road that has-
Could use some of that money?
Yes, that could use some of that money. And I also want to make the board aware, I put in for subdivision that was almost denied because of the quality of that road. And that would devalue my property by millions of dollars. I have four hundred acres of land on that road that I've been paying taxes for, and I paid over a hundred thousand dollars in taxes in the past ten years on that property. And I was almost denied a subdivision because it hasn't been approved. And, and I see nine hundred and forty-two thousand in the fund, three hundred and seventy-five from last year, four hundred and seventy-six thousand from the year before, three hundred and forty-two this year.
We're getting off-
No, it, it's, it's on focus.
I hear you, and I, and I, and I understand that you're looking for us to show how we're prioritizing chapter ninety.
Yes.
I can't answer that at this point. I don't think the board can. But it's a point.
Okay.
And I agree with you in that point.
Thank you. And, and it's a, a point that I think we have to address as this town grows and we look at spaces. And that was my concern, seeing seventy thousand spent out here on additional, what I thought was design, which will lead to a project which will probably take more of our chapter ninety money. And it's probably just for that intersection on ten, right there across from Fowler Farms, to have a better line of sight. And that's what I'm saying. I think our priorities are a little messed up.
Point taken.
And, and I, one last thing, I do apologize. It was here on the other concern, and had to work a little bit late tonight, which was the using of town employees to better public property, when I saw them fixing potholes in the church parking lot. I think that already passed on the agenda. I would respectfully ask if that could be reviewed again, since I-
Bring that back in the agenda.
And I'll wait until we get to that point.
Okay, but it won't be tonight at this point, because we've got executive sessions, we've got to deal with negotiations.
Okay, was it a long answer on it, or was it a quick answer?
It's gonna be involved, I can see it coming.
Okay.
And I wanted the highway superintendent here, and he's not here anymore, so.
All right. No, I, I appreciate it, and I will come back, though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Karen?
Yes?
Um, just, just to follow up on John's question he had asked earlier, I just spoke to Randall really quick to make sure I wasn't losing my mind. So this project essentially was on the tips, the, oh, come on, I just had improvement, improvement program for the state. So essentially, what happens, they start out the process, we fund our piece with the chapter ninety funds, we have to wait for it to get up to the point where it is now active on the tip, or the programs are actually looking at. We get additional funding for it, but essentially, right now, we're just, this is the rest of the design piece and finishing up that cost. They don't start out the beginning with an ultimate bid. It's essentially as you go, when the exceptions to procurement law is actually consultant services. So that's why, you know, we don't necessarily have to go out to bid each phase or even at the beginning, but it's essentially, we've been working with this consultant since the beginning of the project, they're now in this last phase. Before they do the work, they give us the quote, we move forward, we pay with it out of chapter ninety. That's the way we've been doing these projects. Does that help?
Yes. And if you look at what they're doing for this money, there's quite a bit of work in there.
I lost track here. Did we approve this?
Yes.
Did we approve, okay. All right, so let's move on to the Franklin Regional Transportation Authority's contract for the van for the council on aging. That's an annual contract, if memory serves?
Correct.
And I don't think there's any changes in there, is there?
I, I know that council on aging goes over it every year, piece by piece, because they do the sole management of this.
So I need a motion to approve this?
Okay.
FRTA.
It's the Franklin Regional Transit Authority. We contract with them for the van for council on aging. For, I can't give you the history because I wasn't here when the first contract was formed. I don't know why we went with FRTA as opposed to PVTA, but we do. We're actually a member of the FRTA as a result. The delegate this town has generally sent is the town administrator to these meetings. Their position is, you know, up for appointment again the next meeting. If anyone would love to go to these meetings, they're usually quarterly, they're up in Greenfield, they're at, oh, three o'clock in the afternoon, they're about two hours, and they meet at the transit station. Nice room.
So it's just to renew the contract?
Is it simply to renew the contract that we currently have for the van?
And we never go out to bid, and just see if the companies are comparable?
Um, it's not a company, it's a transit authority, so we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of parameters on this one. We can always look at seeing if it's possible to go PVTA. I imagine there's probably a reason that I'm not aware of, that we went with FRTA when we first went with the council on aging.
Don't we get granted, grants to pay for this?
I, my understanding, if I'm correct, is I believe we do some, but not fully. And we also charge the citizens who use the van.
Right.
A certain fee that's actually, I don't know if it's prescribed in this agreement or a separate one.
I'm wanting, looking at it, if FRTA is listed in the grant or not, that'd be something we can find out, if it's specified?
Excuse me.
Do I hear a motion?
Our options, we don't do this.
Yeah. Then we, council on aging loses their van.
Yeah. No, me either.
Jim, we using your phone number for referrals on that one? For all complaints, please call Jim at home.
I'll, I'll make the motion, we accept the FRTA agreement.
I'll second it. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're into E, other documents requiring signatures. We have a quick claim deed from Triple Seven LLC.
I'm going to recuse myself. Let me step off the board. This has-
You have a conflict of interest?
Make out the minutes that Mr. Labrie stepped out of the room. Seriously. Heather, can you give us an update on the quick claim deed, please?
I could, but I bet you could do a better job.
I'm not as articulate as you are. Go ahead.
I, I can't do both things.
Sorry.
All right, so we have the quick claim deed here. Triple Seven LLC, Massachusetts LLC, having its principal place of business at one oh-seven Valley Road, Southampton, Hampshire County, Massachusetts, in consideration the sum of one dollar paid grants to the inhabitants of the town of Southampton, municipal corporation established under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. With quick claim covenants, all of its right title and interest in and on the road to or street known as Old Harvest Road, as herein after described. So what this is essentially telling us is, if you recall, at the last annual town meeting, the board voted to accept a road as town public way. That went through extensive hearing at the planning board to make sure that it was in compliance with everything in order for it to be released to move on to the town warrant to go on as a potential public way. It actually had to be signed off as well by the major department heads, the police fire, and also the highway, making sure they met all the requirements, they're safe and everything else. So this is simply saying, at the end of the day, oh, yeah, the town approved this at any town meeting, and here we affix our signature.
And it's recorded to registry of deeds. Oops.
Correct.
I don't know if you have a signature page, but I'm bringing one down to you.
Okay.
Cool.
All right. Any payrolls or bill warrants?
Yes.
Let me go in here.
You didn't summarize them.
Yes, it's safe.
It's safe to come back now. Heather, you're gonna need to help me with this because I'm seeing-
Sure, I'm looking for the signature page. So it's right here. It's the one with the exceptions, and then there's a second signature page.
All right.
So P D is payroll deduction, and S K is-
All right. Warrant P sixteen hyphen fifty-one, and the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars, seventy-five cents. Is that the only one? Okay. And the other is payroll deduction. It's P D sixteen hyphen four-nine, the amount is forty-two thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars, fifty-seven cents. So I hear a motion to accept these and pay them.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna recuse myself again because this is for payroll, correct, for the warrant? Um, I filled out a disclosure, my sister's the town clerk.
Right.
So I don't want to get, I, I actually called, um-
The Ethics?
State, the Ethics, and they said, do not sign the warrant.
But you don't have to leave the room.
No, not for that. Okay.
Please sit down.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
It's getting bad if we have to keep turning around and telling Jim, leave the room. More time in the men's room than-
So Charlie, I did speak to Donna, and her and Vicki will put together an additional line in the sheet, because we already have other folks who can't sign for everything. They can sign for everything with the exception thereof, a specific item. So when they approve it, they just, you guys have generally just been approving the warrants in their entirety. But there is a sheet that supplements, that says, I'm assigning this to approve everything, with the exception of this line that I can't.
So what I'm hearing is, is John and me are the only two that can sign everything.
Yes.
I can sign everything. Except for your payroll. I'm not on the payroll. Oh.
Okay. For the minutes, May third, twenty sixteen, are they, they're done, right?
The only, the only minutes-
On that list that have not been completed yet due to their extensive nature is April twenty-seventh. The other three are in Jim's folder in front of him, that's blue.
All right. May seventeenth, twenty sixteen, and May thirty-first, twenty sixteen. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I haven't read them.
Yeah, I haven't read them either.
I think-
Table it?
I would table, I'd like to review them with lots of-
All right. Motion to table all the, all the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, tabled.
There you go.
Calendar announcement for the selectman's meeting. The next for the selectman's meeting is June twenty-first, next week. I will not be here.
Going out of the country again?
I'm not leaving the country, unless I'm forced to. But at that point in time, I just want you to know also that we need to pick a date for July for our meeting. And typically, it would have been July twelfth, but July twelfth, I will not be available.
I hope we go with, when are you available? We can narrow it down that way.
Uh, July fifth, which is right after the fourth.
No, I'm, I'm going to, that's, that's July fourth week, yeah.
Right, and then I'm gone the nineteenth, and I'm gone the twenty-sixth, so I'm gone the rest of the month.
Well, we don't have to put it on Tuesday.
Well, you don't need to have me here either, as long as you have a quorum.
I think the twelfth, I have a problem.
You don't have to have me here, I mean, as long as you got a quorum.
I can leave the town.
I'm good with the twelfth.
I've already got it down, so.
So there we are.
So twelve.
July twelfth, done deal.
Do you want to do the next meeting in July, or just that one?
Are we doing one in July and one in August?
Well, you know, depending on if we get through these contracts that we have to do with the various department heads, I'd like to get those, you know, finalized, but we can play it by ear.
All right, play it by ear then, go from there.
Well, it'd have to be the nineteenth because of twenty-sixth, that week I'm done, so.
Yeah, because in July, if we have a meeting next week, we're going three weeks until the next one, is that right? Two weeks?
Well, why don't you run it?
One, two.
There's a lot of folks are out, June and the first, so a lot of department heads are actually away, the last week of June, first week of July. So you're already missing people to-
Yeah, it's like tonight with-
You'll be, you'll be having a meeting.
Well, right, but if we, if we got infr-, I mean, that may not be a bad idea if we have stuff we need to do. But, you know, I guess we need to go to the next meeting and, which is next week, right?
So why is it the twenty-first and not the twenty-eighth of June?
We have to do it twenty-first with the safe routes to school. Remember, it was a request from, well, we don't have to, but we had decided to, we had set the hearing date for that because we have to put the order of taking for safe routes to school.
We could have our normal meeting on the twenty-eighth and just have that limited schedule on the twenty-first.
And, and the board can do the twenty-eighth, but just remember that I will not be here for the meeting, so the board is more than welcome to have a meeting without me. I don't know if Jenny will be available, she will not. So as long as you have someone to take the minutes, totally good.
A clerk can take the minutes.
I will not be here.
I, I do have on my schedule next week a quick meeting, fifteen minutes or something like that, to do some approvals. And then the twenty-eighth, I have down for a full meeting. Is that what you have?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at. Either that, or you can do the full meeting on the twenty-first, but then you're going to three weeks, like you want to do, but I'm good with that as well.
So on the twenty-first, so far on the agenda is, we have to do the order of taking
for the safe routes to school. And we should be doing annual appointments, reappointments. Vicki may have another transfer set, because we can only do those to a certain date. And I don't know if there'll be any other last-minute vacation carryovers or anything else, but anything that has to be done-
But anything that has to be done this fiscal year, essentially, if the 21st is the last date, has to be the dates wrapped up on.
Well, right now, we have it set for the 21st and 28th. Let's keep both on the calendar, and next week, we can decide if we need the 28th or not.
I'm not going to be here, so whatever works for you guys.
You keep saying that.
I'm not. Sounds good. We can always, but then again, we're going to have to know, are we going to do a full meeting on the 21st? Are we just going to do a...
I don't have anything scheduled for the 28th at this point. Again, like I said, I'll be away, and most department heads will all be away. So, if the board's meeting, I know there's a lot of things we need to discuss, or the board needs to discuss as a full board, policies and like, but I know the inclination has been to have a full board. And the other question is, do you guys have a quorum for the 28th? Because Charlie's out. John, will you be here?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yep.
Okay, so you'll have four, but you'll have no one to take notes, and depending on when you change the agenda, I won't be here.
The clerk can take notes, huh?
Right, yeah.
I can't hear you down here.
We're getting tired of it.
No, I would say, let's, let's, on the 21st, let's see what comes up. Maybe we can wrap everything up then, and we'll be good. So, let's play it by ear.
I agree, because sometimes two weeks is too long. Okay, so we'll meet next week on the 21st. Charlie won't be here.
Mm-hmm. All right. We have a schedule here with us in the Board of Planning Board that's still in the works. Before we go into executive session, I want to make an announcement to everyone. This morning, I was informed that one of our longtime residents in town, Mr. Ollie Gordon, passed away. Mr. Gordon was the Southampton Fire Chief from 1954 to 1975. I want to acknowledge the time and work he's done for our community. With that, the Select Board will be now moving into executive session. We will not be returning into open session. We will be into, I want to get us into the executive session.
I can't ask.
That's all.
I was just going to ask what day you had scheduled the follow-up for.
That is going to go on her table for her decision as to when they wanted, when she's going to put in the agenda.
Okay. And can I also add the spending of the Chapter 90 money and how that's allocated and prioritized?
You're talking about use of town equipment on private property?
Yes.
And allocation priorities based on Chapter 90?
Yes, sir.
I'm hoping Heather got that, but that should go on to an agenda.